Ladies and gentlemen, will you join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my pleasure to welcome you to our September planning meeting. And Ms. Mason, before roll call, in light of the terrible natural disasters that have struck our nation in the last couple of weeks, and in recognition and memory of the horrific events of 9/11 16 years ago, I'm just going to ask that we start this evening's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Ms. Mason, roll call.
Ms. Bates? Mr. Eden? Mrs. Fryrick?
Here.
Ms. Leopold Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Posenow?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mrs. Schrader?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Toman?
Here.
During our planning meeting, we have numerable opportunities for public comment. This is the first opportunity, and you are welcome to step to the mic. Introduce yourself by name and address, and address any comments or questions to the chair. There'll also be an opportunity after each of our discussion items, and again at the conclusion of the meeting. Does anyone wish to address the board as we begin this evening? Seeing none, let me move to the board's president's report. I must report that the board met in executive session following our regular monthly meeting of August 21st, 2017, as permitted by Section 707 of the Sunshine Act, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. No official action was taken. Dr. Merkel?
Thank you, Ms. Leopold Sharp. It gives me great pleasure this evening to introduce Dr. Ton Ketterman, our Director of Educational Services. Oh, do you know what, Dr. Ketterman, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Let's go with our district affiliated-
She's not so thrilled to present you.
-report first, and let me introduce Jen Myers.
Hi.
Sorry about that, Jen.
That's okay. So I am the President of the York Suburban Music Booster Association, and just on behalf of the kids and the staff, they are looking forward to another great school year. The staff and students enjoy seeing-
Excuse me, Jen, sorry. I should've, and it's my fault. If you could step up to the microphone, that'll help us record and have- Well, it's not for volume as much as it is for recording, so thank you.
Do you want me to start all those?
If you don't mind, I'm so sorry.
No, I don't mind. So my name is Jennifer Myers, and I am the President of the York Suburban Music Booster Association. The students and the staff are looking forward to another great school year. The staff and the students really enjoy seeing the administrators and the board members at their performances. We realize you can't be at everything, but supporting the students' efforts is much appreciated, and would be greatly appreciated. The public concerts will be in October, December, March, and May, and the school musical is in early March and looks to be a fun one. We do thank you for approving the opportunity for our department to travel to Florida last year. It was a wonderful experience for our students to perform in public outside of York Suburban. The students were well behaved and enjoy the mixture of musical activities, social time, and educational activities. While we are not looking to travel this year, the staff will be planning a smaller trip for next school year, and the music boosters will continue to offer opportunities for the students to fundraise money, which not only benefits our organization, but the students to participate. And as you know, the Music and the Sports Booster share responsibility at the Big Orange Cafe. We are currently experiencing some equipment issues. The freezer has been knocked out by one of the last week's storms, so we're looking to replace the freezer, as well as other pieces of the equipment in the stand. Because of this, we may need to make some last-minute adjustments for the first home football game this Friday. A meeting is scheduled to discuss this. And finally, the band staff has been working with a uniform company that services many local bands in the area. We've selected a design, and a design that we like. And our uniforms are 13 years old, and it is time for an update. We look forward to working with the administration and the board on the purchase of new marching band uniforms. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Jennifer? Jennifer, I would ask, when is your meeting for the Booster Club Stand?
For the Big Orange Cafe, they are meeting tonight and tomorrow.
Okay.
So we are really trying to-
And I promised, I received an email late today-
Okay.
-for some information for tomorrow.
Right.
So in time for that meeting, you'll have an answer from that.
Great.
Okay. The boosters are looking for some alternatives, and making sure that there's administrative approval and so forth for that. I don't want to speak cryptically around everybody, so we're working on that. I have a cabinet meeting agenda, a cabinet meeting tomorrow morning, first thing, and it will be on our agenda.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I did have one question. As a band parent alum, from a time when the school was a lot smaller and the band was a lot larger, and we uniformed about 135 musicians, my question is, when you replace uniforms at a time like this, when the band is so much smaller, but we would hope that it doesn't stay that size, how do you budget the number of uniforms to purchase?
That would probably be a better question for Mr. Husler.
Okay.
Yeah, I would-
I was just curious about that.
I would address it without.
Okay. So just a curious question, Dr. Merkel. Thank you very much for all you do, and please extend our gratitude to the entire booster. The group of parents is a very dedicated group. I just saw a number of them out here, and it's very much appreciated all the time and every you put in. Thank you.
I sure will. Thank you.
And now, Dr. Ketterman, to give us an update on Bright Horizons.
Very good. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our partnership with Bright Horizons and the York Suburban Early Learning Program. Let me first start by introducing who we have here with us from Bright Horizons, going from right to left here. Jess Cluff is the Director at Valley View, and oversees the Indian Rock Program as well. Erica Alvarez is the Director at Yorkshire and oversees East York. And then the Regional Manager Wendy Rousch is here with us as well. So I wanted to give you just a little timeline of our partnership and our time together. You can go ahead to the next slide, yes. Very good. It was in November of 2014 that we decided we really wanted to provide a quality pre-kindergarten program, and also a kindergarten enrichment program for our half-day kindergartners. And so it was April of 2015 that we actually contracted with Bright Horizons, and they quickly helped us to see that, although our original plan was to just start with the kindergarten enrichment, that other half-day, and do some before and after-school, because we felt like that's where our market, we know we have that market, and we felt the most comfort there. But Bright Horizons let us know that, hey, this is our business, and if you really want to provide full service, you should be including preschool right away, because of the families having siblings and little ones, and instead of having to go to two different places to drop children, it's going to be best if we include them. And they felt very confident in starting it right on that first year. So we did begin with the preschool program in the first year. So in the school year of 2015-16, we started with two classrooms at, well, really, we used three classrooms at Valley View, for, one for preschool, one for kindergarten enrichment, and then we had a classroom that we devoted to the before and after-school care. The same thing was happening at Yorkshire. Then we also had after-school, before and after-school programs, both at Indian Rock and at East York. And we weren't too far into the system, into the school year, when we recognized that we didn't have a large number of students out at Indian Rock, and with having to have two adults there, and a few number of kids, and then being responsive to a parent who had an idea of, you know, having to go from Indian Rock to Valley View to pick up children, a lot of the Indian Rock kiddos had siblings at Valley View. So Bright Horizons was very responsive, and we did a survey of the families, and it was determined that the majority did want to have the programs in one place. They appreciated the convenience of that, and again, their location, and where they worked, and picking them up and whatnot. So we did move the Indian Rock kids back to Valley View after January of that first year. Then, again, as I said, we did have the preschool program, and that was one thing that changed when we learned that when you have a preschool program in a building, you must have a director in that building. So again, our original thought was to have one director to oversee all of the programs, but we learned through the licensing that they needed to have a director at each program. So we have two directors, that's why we have two directors, for the two different sites where the preschools are. And then we also learned that our playground equipment, we needed to have playground equipment that was age-appropriate. So we had to add that into the expenses of the contract as well. And I believe we're soon making our last payment on that playground equipment. The, it then came to our attention that, we wanted, again, to provide the best care, we needed to expand the program once again to include summer. This was something that we were seeing needing to be done down the road. But again, we were having a lot of confidence at that point, and the relationship with Bright Horizons, that we felt comfortable starting at that very first summer. So we included a summer camp program that all the kids could join as well. So it provided year-round care for those students who were with us, and it also provided an opportunity for parents who maybe didn't need the care during the year, or who just wanted to send their child for some enrichment programming over the summer. The following school year, we had the same setup, where Valley View and Indian Rock students were both at Valley View. We did survey the parents at East York to see if they wanted to consider a similar situation to have the East York kids at Yorkshire for siblings and whatnot, and their responses came back opposite. They wanted to have their home program in their home school. And I think the proximity of the two schools probably has a lot to do with that. So they maintain, we maintain an East York before and after-school program. The one thing we did change last year during the program was the preschool. We noticed the three-to-five-year-olds, there's quite a difference in learning and capabilities from a three-year-old to a pre-kindergartner. So we started splitting those programs. So we divided it into a preschool program, which was mainly for three-year-olds, and then what we call kindergarten prep for the four-year-olds. So again, they could diversify their curriculum a little more that way. So this year, the only change that has happened in the program is that we no longer offer the kindergarten enrichment, of course, because we don't need it with offering full-day kindergarten ourselves. But we still have the rest of the structure in place. So the next slide kind of gives a timeline of the numbers. So let me kind of explain, which we need to go back one, the difference here. If you'll see up at the top, we talk about the total number of children served, and these are just the total number of children that come through the program. Remember that some of them might just be a Tuesday-Thursdays child, somebody might be a Monday-Wednesday-Friday, so that's why that number is high. And you can see, it's nice to see that we've grown from year one to year two, from year two to year three. It looks like we've taken a decline, but that doesn't include our summer number of kids, the summer camp kids. And we do typically add on 40 to 50 kids over the summer. So those numbers will probably be representative, very similar to where we were last year. And also, it doesn't include kindergarten enrichment kids, because we no longer need that. The next section talks about CCIS funding. CCIS is Child Care Information Services. They help low-income families, they help fund some of their childcare. There's a lot of restrictions and a lot of limitations, a lot of requirements, I should say, that they have to do to participate in the program, but that just shows the number of families, number of students that were serviced through CCIS. The next one, full-time, FTEs is kind of a childcare term, full-time equivalent. So that actually tells you how many children are in the program if they would be full-time. So if you count the Tuesday-Thursdays kids with the Monday-Wednesday-Fridays kids, that gives a more accurate picture of how many Monday through Friday students we have. They might not be there the whole time, but again, that's the equivalent of a full-time person. And again, we have the school year and the summer, and you can see on this last year, we of course don't have those summer numbers yet, but our numbers have been, you know, very similar. And then at the bottom is our profit share with, of course, York Suburban being the first number, the percentage that we have agreed upon in our contract, and then the actual numerical profit. The first year, we had startup costs, of course, and a lot of the equipment and furniture that had to be purchased for the classrooms, so that's why the difference in the profits. So at this time, Jess Cluff is going to come up and talk a little bit about the quality of the program.
Hi. York Suburban's Early Learning Program participates in Keystone Stars, which is a quality initiative in Pennsylvania. The program helps early learning and school-age programs work towards higher levels of quality to improve the outcomes for the children in our program. There are four levels of programs, star one, two, three, and four. The higher the star level, the higher quality the program. Moving through stars is an intensive process requiring improvements and documentation in the following performance standard areas: staff qualifications and professional development, learning program, community and family involvement, and leadership and management. In addition to improving the quality of the program, there are also benefits for the program and staff that are participating in Keystone Stars. A few of these benefits include grants to purchase additional equipment, learning materials, financial aid for staff to continue their education, and resources for additional staff benefits. Next slide, please. Rising through stars typically takes many years. Of the 25 childcare centers in New York, only six are at a star four level. One is a star three, nine are star twos, five are star one, and four do not participate in stars. Our first year, Valley View and East York achieved star-two status. The following year, Valley View qualified as a star-four facility. Yorkshire achieved their star-two, and East York maintained their star-two. In 2017-2018, Valley View will maintain their star-four. East York and Yorkshire will renew at a star-two, and then work towards a star-four. Next slide, please. One of the areas looked at by stars and in which our programs excel is our teacher credentials. Two of our teachers hold master's degrees. Five of our teachers have earned their bachelor's degrees, and three employees have their associate degrees. This year, we had one employee earn her Child Development Associate credential, and one more is finishing his coursework now to receive it in November. We also have three teachers beginning their CDA this year as well. Erica will now tell you some more about our curriculum, "The World at Their Fingertips."
Thank you, Jess. I'm a little bit shorter. "World at Their Fingertips" is a curriculum designed to encourage and inspire all children while giving our teachers the framework for their observations and plannings within the classroom. It's a comprehensive curriculum for infants through school age, and it's integrated, emphasizing the importance of nurturing relationships, child development, and active learning. Our teachers are, mainly use this curriculum to help our children approach school with an academic, the skills, confidence, and the drive that they need to succeed. So as you can see up here, we've kind of just outlined a few of the seven elements that are included in our "World at Their Fingertips." Those are language works, math challenge, science rocks, projections, art smart, toward a better world, well-aware, and movement matters. So if you look at some of the pictures, we just have some really hardcore documentation of what our students do in our programs in each of those key elements. We also have eight key concepts that build the foundation of our world curriculum, and those include high expectations, prime times, which are adult and child interactions, planned child choice learning environments, emergent curriculum, developmentally appropriate instruction, making learning visible through documentation and display, full partnership with parents, and 21st century technology. These eight key concepts really help define our philosophy and all of our practices here at Bright Horizons. We'd love to invite you to explore our websites and visit our programs.
Yes, they do post an open invitation to come by anytime. They love to have guest readers and whatnot. But as you can see, we've really developed a great partnership with them. We're very pleased, they've been very responsive to what our needs are and what the families' needs are. One of the neatest things is, again, that those kids are really acclimated in the school. They follow the same behavior system program, they know the 4B rules, they use everyday math just like we do, we're dabbling in mindfulness, they're starting to dabble in mindfulness. So it's just really neat that they are truly a part of the school community. So we're very pleased with how things have been going to this date. I guess, to mention what's next, we're actually in the third year of our three-year contract. So we have a meeting scheduled for the Meeting of the Minds here next month to talk about where our next steps will go, you know, with Bright Horizons in the contract and whatnot. Do we have any questions?
I noticed that there are fewer in the previous slide, I guess, that there were fewer children. We're trying to estimate this year, is that moving up?
Are they signing up yet, or?
Uh, well, one of the, one of the reasons are we have two families in particular, with four kids and two kids, so they're six, who just were not able to maintain meeting the qualification.
And this is a school year, and it reflects three months, first since you told me, I'm sure it did the two years. So this could fluctuate as the year-
Right, right. More could be, more could be added.
Thank you.
Actually, that was my question, too.
I'm sorry.
No, I said that was my question, too.
Was your question as well.
It seemed like a significant decline here, so, yeah.
Right, right, yeah. Two families.
So do we have, you said that there were changes because we went to a full-day kindergarten. Do we still have before and after care?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We do.
So that didn't go away?
It's just that other half-day program, the kindergarten enrichment program that we no longer have the need for.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I also did want to mention, they do a great job of communicating, both at the local school level and then Bright Horizons has information, too, more at the regional level. These do not do it justice. They're beautiful, bright, colorful newsletters that they send out electronically. Again, both a weekly newsletter from the classroom, weekly plans from the classroom, and then there's all kinds of parenting tips and whatnot. So we did make you packets here that are for the public, or anyone who wants to see a sampling of some of the communication they send home.
Dr. Ketterman, where do we stand with enrollment vis-à-vis our capacity? Do we have a waiting list? Are there still vacancies in the program?
We do have waiting lists, am I right? At what levels are we? Oh, before and after-school care are both, at all places, we have a waiting list at this point.
I mean, it's all for, at Yorkshire, at Yorkshire, we're waiting for preschool, pre-prep, and before-after. And we search as well, before-and-after, or off-the-own.
What size? On public to?
For preschool and pre-prep, right now, it's approximately 10, before-and-after is about 5 or 6.
And how about Valley View?
We have one or two part-time openings for preschool and for pre-prep. Currently, we have one preschool teacher, so once we get an expensive waiting list there, that it makes it economically feasible to bring in another teacher. We'll clear the waiting list and make that a classroom of two teachers with up to 20 children.
So if I live in East York, and East York is full, can I come to Valley View? If I'm prepared to bring my child to Valley View?
For preschool, preschool.
The only reason I'm asking this question is it's been so long since I was ever in any kind of care program. What goes into a pre-care or a post-care program? And what do the kids do?
For before and after-school, if you mean? Well, they have different themes that they do, that, so again, they do give them, sort of their snack, there's some playtime, that kind of thing. But again, there's also programming and different themes. We were running a program where they would be able to do homework, have some computer time, some reading time, before they would go and play. Would that be fair to say? Mostly after-school.
There's some STEM projects happening, or movement matters, yoga and physical nature.
Yoga? Whoa.
(laughing)
I never heard of that until I was about 35. Thank you.
Just last year.
I'd like to comment on the program. The board may recall that this was just a vision a few years ago, and this is one of those exciting projects that Dr. Ketterman and I sat down and chatted about our visions of what could or should happen with a program like this. And it was, early on, we went on a visit together, and it was a two-hour drive, and we hashed things out on the way over, and hashed things out on the way back, and then it was like, two months later, I heard back from Dr. Ketterman, and she had all the kinks worked out and had a full plan, and it was one of those balls that she just picked up and ran with, and really pretty much said, Shelley, I got this. And really has done a bang-up job with this. She coordinated committee with a group of teachers, and it was, it just was very well done. And then for us to be fortunate enough to work with these folks from Bright Horizons, who do a really terrific job with us, and have integrated themselves very well into the York Suburban ways, and we're very grateful to Bright Horizons and the staff that has worked with us. So we have grown much faster in many ways than I anticipated. We are looking to grow in some other ways as well. But the idea of the four-star designation in a short time, and then two-star designation in our other areas, is, that's a real feather. That's something we should be celebrating very loud. That's, we heard the statistics on how unusual that is in York County, and the idea that we have that here is just pretty fantastic and something to celebrate. Some of the things, we continue to look forward and say, how can we grow and improve? And there's really two areas that we're looking to, and that's to continue to grow in our partnership, our curricular partnership between preschool and what happens at the primary level. And we've made some significant strides, but want to marry that even more closely. It's tricky, because our teachers don't have any time available at the same time that the early learning folks have time available. So the idea that they can get together is very, very tricky. So that's made that curricular partnership growth a little bit more difficult than we anticipated. The second area that we want to continue to grow is, to grow, is that idea of those folks who don't qualify for the CCIS funding, but can't afford childcare. So that in-betweener family that can't quite afford to pay, but may not qualify for, and how do we grow that through scholarships or otherwise? And honestly, when we started this, we thought that would happen a little more quickly than it has, but it is on our radar to continue to target that. So couldn't be more pleased right now with the way things are going, and look forward to continued partnership. Thank you to Bright Horizons folks, congratulations, and thanks to Dr. Ketterman. Really was one of the key pieces. She and Mrs. Mason partner on this, and I have to wedge my way into a meeting to find out what's going on. They work so well together with it.
Just a couple of thoughts, since what you said prompted a few. Is there, my first thought was with respect to those in-between parents, is that something that perhaps maybe would fit under the Communities That Care umbrella? Just a thought, you don't need to respond to that, I'm just throwing it out there. The other thought, Dr. Ketterman, do you have any sense, and I'm guessing it might just be anecdotal as opposed to actual data, but the children that are in the preschool, when they do get to kindergarten, do you, do you have a sense of-
Readiness.
-how their readiness compares to what we, the children that we were having come into the program, into kindergarten, prior to Bright Horizons?
I don't know about prior to Bright Horizons, but we did, just with this last registration, we were looking specifically at the students who were in the program and doing some comparisons to, you know, students who weren't coming from our program. And overall, they did very well. Of course, there were, you know, some students who didn't perform as well, but again, there were, one of them, doesn't speak much English, so we, you know, there were some difficulties. Or again, there were some, I should say they were representative of sampling, because there, most of them did very well, but there were some outliers that, you know, were showing some difficulty acquiring information. And the teachers, as soon as we talked to the names, they were like, yeah, he's struggling, you know, that kind of thing.
And I guess, the other question I want to ask, prior to having this available, do you see a higher percentage of our York Suburban students being better or ready for kindergarten as opposed to before this was on the horizon? Do you see what I'm saying? In other words, when you're looking at the kindergarten classes as a whole, do we, are you finding or are you seeing that we have children that are, that ease that transition into kindergarten since we have Bright Horizons, is it easier? Or are there more children who have an easier transition? Maybe that's what I want to say.
For transition purposes, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Just, yes, just visiting, just even the full-day program, you know, this year. Those students, yes, I mean, it's their home school. They're very comfortable in their setting, they're very comfortable with the whole cafeteria process, you know, they, that's a huge help in the kindergarten culture.
Sure.
You know, since we're in school for the last year or two.
All right, thank you.
What are the length of time that a three-year-old is in preschool? How long are they here? What are those hours?
They can be there, I mean, six to six is the hour of the entire program. So they can be there the entire day.
Okay.
The academic, right, the academic portion is a portion-
The academic portion is of course concentrated in the morning. They have, you know, a two-hour rest time in the afternoon.
Right.
So the academic portion is much, is concentrated since nine to eleven.
So it's more of a, what I think of as a traditional three, I mean, if I'm a stay-at-home mom, but I want my child to have that experience of a, of a preschool, it's like nine to eleven?
Correct.
Three days a week? Or can I, could that be five days?
Mm-hmm.
Five days? Okay.
And I think they would really do attend full-time and not just a one or two-day-a-week type option. And most of the families would attend like an eight or ten-hour day. In our World Elements, our eight key concepts, we talk about our prime times and our interactions with the children and adults. So even though it's seven o'clock in the morning, there's real learning happening during that exchange when we're having breakfast. So, learning happens from the day they, or from the minute, the minute they walk in to the minute they leave. Even though we don't have that small group instruction at, you know, nine or ten.
So most of them do more of a, more of a preschool slash daycare kind of thing at that age group as opposed to just coming from nine to eleven? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And you folks, you have early start at 6:00 AM, so feel free to, to, you're welcome to stay, but you may also feel free to leave.
Thank you.
Moving into the final item under my agenda, and that's the opening of school update. And I really just wanted to reiterate, last board meeting, we just had a few days in. We have, we have a few weeks in now, which seems impossible this early in September. But in all honesty, opening has been as smooth an opening as, as I have experienced as an administrator in the district. And, and that starts with really a terrific opening day, a set of opening, building, professional development days that our administrators put together at the building level. That was just fantastic. There is a sense of lower stress amongst the staff, which has to start to eke into the student body as well. Some of it purposefully and some of it by, by, by simple fact that it exists within the staff. We have a fantastic group of new teachers. We, I, I don't know if a day goes by that an administrator doesn't say something about our, one or more of the new teachers. Dr. Ketterman's done a nice job with that orientation and induction program. I don't know if you saw in the opening, our picture of the week was of, the, the, the new, excuse me, the new teachers were invited to a revs game and had their picture taken with?
Downtown.
Downtown. And, but the feeling in that-
Oh, you're a regular.
I am a regular. The, the feeling in the box was just so positive. And, and several of them brought spouses and significant others and children. It was just a real warm feeling. I got an email from one of them today, who complimented an administrator who remembered meeting his wife at the board meeting. And she said, she is also a teacher, and said, her superintendent wouldn't know her name, let alone recognize her face, and, and how welcome she felt to be with her husband, a new teacher here. And, and again, it, there's a good thing going. And, and we, we want to, we want to grow that. We then hit the Eclipse Project, which was a bang. I mean, it was just a great curricular experience. Our students enjoyed it, our teachers appreciated it. It was just a project well done. Our athletic teams are all off to a terrific start. Not all winning as much as they want, but, but truly, the, everything has gone very smoothly with it. Our numbers are high. When I look at our elementary classrooms, we are at or above guideline in almost every elementary class. Now, I keep saying, let's give it a week and see things settle in. They're pretty settled at this point. But we're one or two over. We're not five or six over anywhere, but one or two over. And, and if you add staffing for one or two over in one place, you've got to add it in eight or ten. And, and so, we're not in that place. But we are, we have on the elementary principal's agenda to be looking at some creative ways to provide support for those higher numbers. And so, stay tuned for that. We did target guardianship and residency in the affidavit process this year. It's too soon to give concrete numbers. Right now, we're sitting at about two hundred, which is disappointing for all the time and effort that we put into it. But we're analyzing that to know how many of them are new versus, did we just make it a more difficult process for everyone? And so, a, a truer analysis of that, analysis of that is forthcoming, so, so stay tuned. But largely, opening has been just terrific across the board. Knock on wood that it stays that way. We're almost halfway into a marking period, and it just feels good. So, kudos to our administrators across the board. They've done a really nice job. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Mason, business office report.
Thank you. The administration's going to be asking the board to approve next year's budget calendar. Did anyone have any questions on that? If not, the administration will also be recommending the board approve a performance license contract for the Spring Musical Shrek to be reformed March 2nd and 3rd. And I have to make a correction, the total cost of the contract is actually $2,935. I was given the number before I had the contract, so it could appear on the agenda. So that correction will be made before the voting meeting. And then as my informational item, tonight, we have Helen Heidler here from Whitson's to congratulate. Helen was the winner, if you will, or the reason Whitson's had a Food Service Director of the Year Award. They actually made it for Helen because of all of the things she did for the district this year. Between students, community, administrators, she really has outdone herself. So Wendy, if you would.
These are pictures in our cafeteria.
And they followed that up with a big fat check, right?
Yeah. In the mail.
Well done.
Thank you.
And to think I rode on the bus with her when we went up to check out Whitson's. Congratulations, Helen. Well deserved.
Helen's done, done a lot of really neat things for the, the students and the staff. And like I said, she's become very active in the community. She's always looking at ways to do things to better the community, better the kids. But it's always about having fun too, I have to say that. Thank you, Helen.
I first knew Helen twenty-five-plus years ago as a mother in the district, but also as a cashier in our cafeteria. And the idea that she has moved from that position to a directorship of, of this company, within this company and at York Suburban, is, it's one of my favorite stories at York Suburban. But also, anything, she's out there soliciting ideas. She's looking for, how can we bring something in? We had a cookout already here at the high school and one at the middle school where they're cooking out on grills outside, just to liven something up. The, the farm to school program, she's all over that. There, there isn't an initiative out there that Helen is not jumping on and trying to find ways to improve and, and grow our program, get more participation with our students and with our staff. And we're just really proud that she's a part of our program and, and we're glad she's here. And I would love it if you introduced your guest tonight.
(laughing). I brought my mother.
Oh.
She hasn't called me until late this afternoon. Mom, are you doing anything tonight? I said, no. Why? And she said, would you like to go to the school board meeting with me? They're going to honor me for food director. I said, certainly, I'd love to come.
Paranoid.
That's wonderful. I'm so proud of her.
Absolutely.
And you should be. And thanks for coming. I would say the board, the administrative team honored Helen at our meeting last week and-
(inaudible).
Compared. We were really quite embarrassed, but, but we did each have a little piece of cake. But we will also be doing some, some press on this to get it out there. But we wanted to share with the board first. And just Helen, a great big congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure. I enjoy every day.
Helen, is, is Whitson's taking any of your IDs and sharing them with the rest of their clients?
They actually have. So, last, two years ago, I started a, a silver apple award where I kind of, I, I found that when you put schools in competition with each other, that they try harder. So I, so every month, I award a silver, silver apple to one of the schools in the district. Whichever one goes above and beyond and does something wonderful. So they, you know, they covet that award. They show it on their line. And so Whitson's actually took that and now it is company-wide in the district.
That's cool.
In, in the company. So now, the whole company awards a silver apple to one of their schools throughout Whitson's.
Excellent, cool.
Helen loves her job so much that some days she forgets what day it is. So you can come in any one of seven days and find Helen in her office. And especially at the end of the month. We just had a, a longtime employee retire. And Helen didn't, it, correct me if I'm, Helen was struggling to find out how to honor her. And she figured it out in the middle of one night. And she got up and spray painted a, a lunch tray and honored her with the golden tray award. But it was, it was just special. And she finds a way to make things special around here. So, thank you, Helen, and congratulations.
Cool, yes, thank you.
And you better get out of here because you're in here early.
It's finally, it's finally early.
And it looks as though they finally gave you an, an orange jacket instead of a white one?
This is persimmon, so.
Okay. Close enough.
Thank you again. And that concludes my report.
No, that, that was Ms. Mason.
My report, sorry.
Does that include your, conclude your report, Ms. Mason?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Atkinson, student board report.
All right. So last Tuesday and Wednesday, three juniors at the high school, Ellis, Spadato, Madeline, Abel, and Jordan Abel held a drive for Hurricane Harvey. They collected darn perishable items that could be driven down to Texas the following day on Wednesday. And the French Honor Society also sold croissants during flex and donated the profits to the relief efforts. And it was really neat to watch students react so quickly to such a devastating event and put themselves behind others and work under a really tight time crunch to make sure that everything got out at one time. So, that was cool. Also, last Tuesday, we had the blackout game. We raised $5,700 to Food For Thought. We also had, the high school art department held an art drop day where they created artwork, all the students created artwork and left them around the school one day. And so then, the next day, students got to find these little artworks and they got to keep them. So it's a cute little idea. And then on Friday, we had the football game at Northeastern. And I'm sure you know, that was a hard loss, thirty-five to zero. But it was really cool because on Twitter especially, there wasn't a single, I didn't see a single negative comment about it. It was more the football players being positive about that this didn't define the team and that now more than ever, they needed the student section. And the students who were part of the student section saying that they wouldn't give up and this wasn't the end and they were always going to be there for them. So it was really cool to kind of see that aspect of it. On Sunday, the marching band performed their show at the York Fair. And homecoming is now four weeks away, so preparations are starting to begin. I'm the chair of homecoming court, so we're having voting on Wednesday and Thursday, which will determine the eight girls on court along with two exchange students. And that will really start all of the preparation for homecoming in the next couple of weeks. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know much about this, but the sixth graders took a field trip to the ropes course at Ski Roundshop to work on team building. And the eighth graders also had a team building day where they learned about the six pillars of character. Don't know much about them, but that sounds really cool. And in case you're wondering, I'm having my third dress drive right now and I'm collecting dresses this week. And then next week, I'm going to be taking the dresses in a box truck and I'm taking them around to different schools around the county and setting up events every day and giving them out for free to anybody who comes. So one for Suburban is going to be on Wednesday, September 20th. And hopefully, people show up and get the dresses. My report.
So if, if I have dresses to donate, how do I get them to you? What's, what's the process?
You can give them to the office during office hours.
Just take them to the office?
Yeah. I have a rack in the back lobby, but-
Okay. And what's the deadline?
This Friday.
This Friday, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to committee reports. Ms. Fireick?
Yes. Facilities Committee will be recommending that Johnson Controls proceed to the Y.T. Chiller at Indian Rock Elementary School at a cost of $183,000. And also for an additional $8,865, we can purchase a five-year parts and labor warranty. Any questions? The chiller that's there now is twenty-six years old and is showing some signs of wear and tear. And as opposed to Johnson Controls was in for our meeting, and as opposed to taking it apart step by step and rehabbing it and putting it back together and maybe it won't work any better anyway, that was going to cost almost $120,000. We were recommending that we have given the chiller.
Any other questions for Ms. Fireick? Mr. Pose now.
The minutes of May 3rd are attached. And I think at the last, at the last finance committee meeting, the administration presented a proposal to provide insurance for hacking essentially for, for privacy. It's not that great of a deal. Across the districts in, in the county, it's mixed as to who's using and who is not. Administration recommended that we not do it. The committee agreed. So, you know, it will come up for discussion. I'm not even sure there's a vote on that.
No.
It's just a discussion, information. And I think everybody got a copy of the proposal in the mail after that meeting. Correct?
Email.
Yeah, email. And that's it.
Before we go to other committees, Ms. Fireick, am I right in thinking that is a facilities committee meeting tomorrow at 4:30?
Tomorrow afternoon at 4:30.
I know, you're going to be looking at the capital plan.
Yes, we're going to be looking at it.
Okay.
Start looking at projects for next summer.
Next summer. Any other committees?
I did look at that agenda and it just struck me. Is there something on there about the pool naming?
No, there's not. And that's, that's a holdup from PSBA on a recommended practice.
Hmm. Okay, maybe we can-
We can, yeah. Understood.
Okay. Are there other committees that have reports?
Just in case she didn't catch the email, the curriculum meeting for later in the month has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. And there's no policy meetings? Okay. Mr. Robinson, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association leadership election.
Yes, ma'am. As I'm sure you've all diligently studied the slate candidates, just in case you haven't. And if you're interested, I can give you Rick's picks for the upcoming elections. President, David Hutchinson, primarily because I like his platform and I think it's pretty strong. Vice President, Eric Wolfgang, primarily? He's a local guy. Treasurer, Mike Gossett, because he's the only one running. Central at large, Cynthia Hornin, because she's a better writer. Western at large, Daniel O'Keefe, because he's solo. And PBA Insurance Trust trustee, Mary Ann Neal. Think she's got a stronger background. Any questions?
Mr. Robinson, I'm understanding that the board will submit a single vote. So are you intending that we would submit our votes to you at the next meeting? How do you want to do this?
Actually, I think the slate- Uh, actually, I think the slate is submitted to Corinne, is it not?
What has happened in the past is, based on your recommendation, um, at the voting meeting, the board would vote, and then I would submit that.
Okay. Thank you.
So from now until next meeting, you can go over the slate of officers again diligently and decide whether or not you're in agreement with this pick?
Any questions for Mr. Robinson?
No other questions? Thank you very much.
And the results of that, I can tell you, being a PS, being on the LDC, are announced at the conference, not through the...
We also have a copy of By Dawn's Early Light, um, included, as my computer has now lost its down arrow. Um, Mrs., that's fine, I got a hard copy. So, any questions about that? You could check with Dr. Merkel. Um, Ms. Fireick, York Adams Academy report?
Uh, nothing, but, um, we're off to a really good start with our new director, Chris Holt, and York Suburban has continued to use their full seats full since early in the year, and our overall enrollment is about sixty-five to seventy percent of our seats are full, which is pretty good for this time of the year, as they're just starting to get people through the testing process. And that concludes my report.
Mrs. Schroeder, anything from New York County School of Technology?
Just a little brief report. Enrollment is, um, which I, I thought you might be interested just to know the size of the school, um, sixteen eighty-one, one thousand six hundred eighty-one is, um, the enrollment for this year. And, uh, in our last meeting, the administration went over, um, their goals and, um, for, you know, really, I thought outstanding goals, but one I wanted to share, which I think is, um, interesting, um, they're going to focus this year on, um, core values. Um, I guess it's six core values that, um, the, for the staff, but obviously to, to trickle down to the student body, uh, the staff is, is really going to, um, put forth the effort to, um, role model these, um, six core values. Perseverance, integrity, optimism, innovation, empathy, and professionalism. And bear in mind that, as a technical school, they all have their shop and their, um, their chosen, uh, department, and so professionalism is going to vary, uh, depending on their particular shop, as they call it. Um, so it'll be, just be interesting, uh, I think for me at least, to, to hear how they're coming with these, because I think as a society, those are certainly values that, uh, you know, the society as a whole can, uh, use more of, but, um, so I'll keep you posted on, um, how that's looking.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Yep.
Any other things that the board wants to mention? Mr. Pose, now, do you want to remind the board about tomorrow's meeting?
Yeah, it is at six-thirty. And it's a presentation by AIA about options and possible solutions to healthcare choices within the community.
And the rotation?
Uh, it's here, right? And so, it was open to the association, any members that wanted to come, and the board.
If anybody wants to come and has not yet RSVP'd to Wendy, please let us know, because we are counting seats to make sure that we're gonna stay in this room.
Anything else? I just want to, oh, Mrs. Schaefer.
Well, once again, we have a meeting here that's lasted, um, less than an hour, so I'd just like to make a, a, a second plea for the facilities and the finance committee meetings to be rolled into this meeting. Um, I, I think the, um, discussion last time was, um, that the new board could decide that when they came in in December as to which way they wanted to go with respect to all-inclusive meetings, with, um, board members and administrators not having to go out in multiple meetings. But it suddenly occurred to me that there are probably only gonna be one or two board members remaining who ever remember having those meetings included, um, in the actual planning meeting as opposed to separate board meetings. So maybe this small window of time might be a good opportunity actually to do that, so there's some sort of a comparison that can be made when the new board members come in. So they have had experience with, with both methodologies, so I'll just, again, a last plea. So I, I just think we'd all be much better informed and less time running back and forth.
Kind of piggyback on that, is there, is there anything that could be shared as far as enlightening, it, as to why those two committees? Is it the length of the agenda? I, I'm just a little unclear.
The committee chairs and the administrators who are responsible for those meetings felt that it was more appropriate that those discussions be handled in a, in a committee setting. So I defer to them in that regard.
You know, I would, I would, I would like to hear, um, for example, tomorrow night's agenda, it seems to me that it would be who's the full board to hear what's on that agenda as opposed to just the committee.
Yeah, I, I mean, I... You're, you're referring to facilities, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, basically, you know, we have time to have, yes, some in-depth discussion, but in reality, before anything is decided, it comes to the full board, if there's, there's no question about it.
Right, but they don't hear the full discussion.
I, I understand, I understand.
And I think as public officials, it's important for all board members to be, um, have that background and that knowledge, especially when we're finished during our meeting, it must have been hours. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me that we're, administrators are coming back for a second meeting, board members are coming back for a second meeting, you know, and here we are, and we have, I don't know, how many decent, how much decent time left. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. I bet I'm the only person...
I'll leave that to the committee chairs, but I understand your point.
What is it, finance and facilities?
Mm-hmm. And oftentimes, I'm not sure about tomorrow, but oftentimes, those committee meetings have outside presenters who are coming at the end of their workday as opposed to coming back out for an evening meeting. So I think that, I think that that's understandable.
Well, that's what that is, so...
Yeah, but they're getting paid for that. We're, we're all volunteers.
Well, I was gonna say, I would put that kind of down on my list of priorities in terms of outside...
Well, I, I agree, but I, I defer to the committee chairs, and that was, that was their request, that they had separate meetings. And of course, um, the entire public and the board are welcome to come to those committee meetings.
To an additional meeting.
Anything else about the committees? I do want to share with the board that the school board director seat on the, um, public school employee retirement board is up for election this fall. Um, the, uh, petitions were due in the Pacer's offices last week, and there'll be a ballot that you'll be receiving, and Wendy, I believe those come to you, don't you hand those out to us? I don't, no, I take it back. They're mailed, because I think we could vote electronically last time. Anyway, sometime, that new board member will be seated at the January meeting, the results will be announced at the December board meeting, so sometime this fall, um, you should look for a ballot, and those ballots will be going to the current sitting members as of this school, this election term. So that ballot will happen before the change of seats in December. Um, anything from the administrators?
Me.
Or you? But I was, I'm looking to the audience first, Dr. Merkel. I see no, no one jumping up. Dr. Merkel.
In the category of all good things must come to an end, uh, Dr. Maloney was sad-faced all day long, actually all week long last week, and I finally asked her today what was wrong, and she said, "Tonight will be my last board meeting." And, uh, with that sadness, we will be painting one of the chairs gold. Um, she's welcome back in that gold chair anytime that she wants, uh, but after thirty-one years in education and ten years at York Suburban, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Maloney for her dedicated work at York Suburban, um, thank her for her colleagueship, and, um, wish her the very best for a long and happy retirement.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I had a revelation this week that the real reason she chose to retire is because she didn't want to sit around this table any longer without three of us that were going to be here.
That's it. That's it.
Well, we are watching the side of this table, and, um, and I don't know what that means, Lois Ann and Wendy and Lisa.
I'm fighting for it, baby. I'm fighting for it.
You might find the, the name tags in different locations at the next meeting to balance it out better.
Yes.
Thank you. All best wishes.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.